Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the September 11th, 2023 School Board Meeting to order. Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Director T. Felton.
Here.
Human.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
W. Felton.
Here.
Claflin.
Here.
La La Verdi.
Here.
Raj.
Here.
That's seven present.
Excellent. If we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Welcome again, everyone. I will ask for a motion to approve our meeting agenda for this evening as well as the committee of the whole meeting minutes for August 28th, 2023. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Without the motion carries. I'm going to turn things over so that we can move around a little bit to Vice Chair Monica Weber.
So today, for our first Quality in Action, we will be administering the Oath of Office to our two new student school board representatives. So take it away Chair Raj.
Excellent. Last year, our South St. Paul School Board approved getting two student representatives onto our board to bring a little bit of student voice to our school board. And so tonight, I have the honor to do a swearing in ceremony. All right. So it is an honor that you were elected to serve as the liaison between the South St. Paul School Board and the students at the South St. Paul Schools, Special District Number Six. As you recite the Oath of Office, you assume the responsibility of carrying out the duties and expectations of these student school board member. Furthermore, you will play an integral role in working together with the school board and superintendent to continue making South St. Paul Schools a safe, effective place to learn and grow for all students and staff. And first, I'd like to introduce Renata for your Oath of Office.
I hereby publicly affirm my commitment to the Oath of Office. I swear and affirm that I will faithfully complete the duties of the office of a student school board member of South St. Paul Public Schools, Special School District Six to the best of my judgment and ability.
Thanks. A round of applause. Official signing of documents as we go forward. And then next, I will turn it over to you, Louise.
I here publicly affirm my commitment to the Oath of Office. I swear that I will faithfully complete the duties of the student board member of South St. Paul Public Schools, Special School District Six to the best of my judgment and ability.
With that, we bring your voice to the board as well. Thank you.
The two of them. Photo.
Yeah, who's taking pictures? Danette's not here.
Should we go up there?
Shall we go behind?
Yes. Oh, hold on. Amy's taking care. Come on.
Do you want to go?
You're good.
You stay there, they're all moving behind you. So there you go. All right, here we go. One, two, three. I'm going to take a couple. All right, good job.
All right. Thank you.
Well, we get two Quality of Actions tonight. Next, I would like to invite Jean Zender up. Community Education Director will highlight Senior Center Programming.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come and showcase our senior program. At this time, I'd like to bring Linda Jacobs-Beus up. She's going to run the PowerPoint. Linda is all things community ed, programming facilitator, you name it, it's on her hat. So with further ado, I'm going to introduce Linda and she'll introduce her friends that she brought with us today.
Good evening, guys. I bought an eclectic group of our seniors and they will speak if you guys have any questions or want any information. Otherwise, take it away, Lisa. So we at Community Ed here at Central Square, we are promoting our Senior Center today. I do want to say today, I signed up my 230th senior member for 2023. So that is pretty great. Go ahead, Lisa. These are all our ongoing activities. We have coffee every day, people come in and walk the square. I know it's not a square, we call it the L, but it's the square. We have Penny Bingo. If you ever want to learn that, it's a great game. It's only going to cost you about a quarter a day. We have cribbage, wood carvers, our line dancing is taking off, Craft Tuesdays, our 500 Club, and our hand and foot games on Thursdays. Our senior board meetings are once a month. Adam here is our president of our senior board. He is also in charge of our 500 Club. We do out and about lunch, so our, we have a sign up list and I drive the van over from the high school and I take them out to restaurants throughout the Twin Cities area. We are going to the Mason Jar next Wednesday. We also have our senior socia's once a month at the Central Square. And this month, we're going to be doing the loaded baked potato, loaded baked potato soup, goulash, turkey gravy, and our holiday potluck every December. And the school board in the past has done at least one or two events a year, so I'm glad to hear that you guys will be back this school year. We also do our senior trips. We collaborate with Ever Grove Heights and West St. Paul Senior Centers and we plan trips. So South St. Paul does get to plan four trips through the year. We're going to go to the Ozark Country Jubilee and the Andy Big, Jersey Boys, Dallin for Murder, and Branson. Our October one isn't on here, but we are going away to Fireside Theater for an overnight in October to see the musical, The Titanic. And Vicky here does all our trips with us, so she can voice and talk to you guys about our trips as well.
I enjoy them. My name is Vicky and it's fun to get away and meet new people. You go to exciting places and see things that you probably wouldn't go to otherwise. I love the overnight trips. I keep telling her more overnight trips. So we can get out of town and do some stuff. But we went to Lake Geneva this year. It was fabulous. It was just really good, so.
That's great.
I'm up for the tours.
We have our big fashion show coming up next month. We have a lady come in and she sells her Taylor Marine apparel and jewelry, our seniors model for everybody. We have a big dinner and then we have door prizes. Those are $20 in the coop. It is going to be our restaurant of choice again this year. They were such an overwhelming success this last show in our spring. So we'll be doing that as well. And if it wasn't for Linda Medina here, who does an integral part of making sure things are organized so I don't lose my head on that day. So very much anything you want to say, Linda?
It's just a very nice gathering and we now also have people that come from Ever Grove to join us for the fashion show. It's a very enjoyable day.
And then we always have our Senior Fit programs. We have Silver Sneakers, we have Silver and Fit, we have classes every day. We have people 55 and older doing our day classes and our evening classes. We have, the big thing that we brought in was Pound when we took over is Rhythm and Sticks. Linda, you've done that one as well.
It's a very, very engaging class.
So those are, check out our website for more because we have tons of fitness programs for everybody. Is that it? Anything, any questions? We have Adam here, who is our president of our senior board. He also manages the 500 Club that plays on Wednesdays and Fridays. We have Ron here also, who does 500 and takes part in our free meals that we do with Kitchen Coalition.
Wonderful. That's great. Wonderful.
I also want to know about this wood carving and what's happening there, so.
We have about eight, eight wood carvers that come in on Tuesdays. They bring their own toolkits and they carve beautiful array of flowers, birds, ducks, just about anything.
I feel like I should go take a lesson. I don't think I've ever done this without leaving with bloody fingers, so.
I was going to say, I did visit them and they are, their carvings are amazing. And I asked, who has the Band-Aids? And everybody reached for their bag and pulled out their bag of Bandages, so you'll be safe.
They even make their own fishing lures. They make copies of fish. It's unbelievable.
Oh, that's incredible. That's wonderful.
It's so great to put faces to the senior members that are involved at Central Square. It's, this is like the first time. I feel like we've had seniors brought before us. So it's really wonderful to see your faces and, and to know all the good things that are happening there. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. Next, we will move into the report section of our meeting. And I'm going to invite Amy Winter, Executive Director of Educational Services, to provide an update for the board tonight on the Minnesota Reading to Ensure Academic Development Act, which is new to our state.
Thank you so much. So yeah, my presentation tonight is really to kind of focus on some of the background information that led up to the Read Act here in Minnesota. The first thing I wanted to do was to introduce the team in the Educational Service Department. I have myself, I have Jody Shannon, Tina Moses, you just saw Jean Zender there, Leslie Gomez, and Brandon Wilcox. And then at the site levels, we have instructional coaches. This is a newer position. And we have one at each of the elementaries, at middle, and at high school. And then lastly, we have peer coaches. And they obviously support all of our staff across, all of our licensed teachers across the district as a whole. And they provide peer coaching to them on a one-on-one basis. So first and foremost, I wanted to talk a little bit about the science of reading and really just provide some context around what science of reading is and maybe what it, people may think it is, but it really is not. And so the science of reading is a collection of research that has happened over the time when you look at education and look at research around how to teach students how to read. And this collection of research has really identified five big ideas. And the five big ideas is around phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension. And so what I want us to be careful about is, is that the science of reading is not necessarily a set curriculum or a set program that if we just adopt and implement that we are going to see the results that we ideally want to have. But it really is a collection of research that researchers have done that work around the educational system and around teaching kids how to read, has really identified key And just, I know not everybody is in the education world, so wanted to give a little bit of additional information. So there are some images here around phonemic awareness, phonics, fluency, and vocabulary and comprehension. And so phonemic awareness really kind of talks about, there's phonological awareness and then there's also phonemic awareness. The phonics talks about the different sounds that are tied to letters. Fluency talks around like accuracy of reading and reading speed. And then vocabulary talks around just general vocabulary we may use in talking and general day-to-day conversations. But there's also vocabulary that you use on an academic level and that's at a little higher level. And then when we're able to do all of those key components, we're able then to do some comprehension and be able to understand what we're reading because we're not focused on learning how to read. When you look at reading, there are lots of models of theory that are out there and these are just three of them that are pretty popular right now. Scarborough's Reading Rope, Simple View of Reading, and this is the cognitive model. And it talks about, you know, you'll see components that were brought up in the science of reading in these models and theories of how to teach students how to read. So I kind of give you that background because this is information that really has kind of become public. This is information that a lot of people are starting to hear about. And it is the information then that obviously the state of Minnesota responded to with the Minnesota Reading to Ensure Academic Development Act, which we would call the Read Act. And so this was put into law on May 24th of 2023. And the goal was that every Minnesota child reading at or above grade level every year, beginning in kindergarten, and to support multilingual learners and students receiving special education service and achieving their individualized goal. And that this now replaces the read well by third grade. And there are some pretty clear directions that the state is asking every district and every school to move forward with to make sure that we're staying up to date with this new research, body of research that the science of reading discusses. The first area talks around providing professional development in two waves. First, initially addressing it with the direct teachers who are providing direct instruction around reading. So that is going to be your intervention teachers, your pre-K through third grade teachers, special education, curriculum directors, instructional support staff, and then employees who select literacy and instructional materials. And so they are giving us a window of time for us to be trained. And then they want the remaining staff to then be trained in this by 2027. And the state has really given some pretty clear parameters about what would be approved professional development that we would need to complete. In addition, that they are also being really clear about a screener tool. So a type of a quick assessment to really see where our kids' reading levels are at. And so talking to us about what would be approved under this Read Act. And then the curriculum, they are going to be giving us an approved list by 2024 and are providing some reimbursement and some directions as of what would be approved or what would be in consideration. And then finally, each district will need to provide data and provide a literacy plan to the state for them to review. I talked about that test or screener. All students K through three will get that both in the spring, the fall, and the spring. The fall one needs to be done within the first six weeks of school and our students are actually getting that done right now. I was in the buildings checking that out. And the, the test really will be looking at those foundational reading skills, phonemic awareness, phonics, decoding, fluency, and oral language. One of the other big pieces that the Reading Act talks about is those characteristics of dyslexia. So students who have pretty severe difficulties in learning how to read, that we are able to identify that in an earlier age. Yeah, grade four and above, then students would then be screened for those same skills if they are below grade level. And the state will also be asking us then to submit that information. And the district will also be looking then to either employ or contract around all of this literacy information. So that's a lot of information around what the state is really giving directions to all of the districts across the state. And so what I'm excited about is that much of this work has already been happening and is starting to move forward, even though not all the details have been laid out by the state. And so currently, right now, we do have an early learning curriculum. We use creative curriculum and we have an assessment tool called TS Gold, which gives us that early information as kids are entering into the kindergarten programming. Once they get into kindergarten and going up through fifth grade, we address their foundational skills through Ufly, which is coming out of the University of Florida. And then this year, we've adopted our English Language Arts Curriculum called Wit and Wisdom. And so that's new when we're launching that. And then we also provide some tiered level of support. So we know that this may not work for all of our kids. And so we then will look at how do we support kids in more of a small group level, maybe some different type of instruction. And so we do that tiered level of support. And obviously, we want to check to see how we're doing. And that FAST assessment tool, which is approved by the state, is what we are currently using and we again are using that information right now. We don't want to forget about that secondary level. And so even right from opening weeks, the secondary teachers did receive professional development and embedding literacy strategies and making sure that they're not forgetting about literacy, even in those content areas. They also do a tiered level of support around supporting students who maybe still are struggling with some of the literacy and reading skills up at the secondary level. And again, we want to just see how we're doing. We will continue to use FAST Bridge. We have our state MCA data and then ACTs up at that secondary level. The last thing is, is some of our teachers got a head start and started getting some of the approved training. And just up to date right now at the elementary buildings, we do have four teachers who have been trained in literacy training that is aligned to the science of reading. And we have 10 teachers who have actually received their reading license. And 13 teachers who have received the letters training are finishing that up. So we even have staff already who have, are already on board or already kind of in compliance with what the Read Act is asking everyone to be, so. Thank you. Checking to see if there's any questions.
Thank you. We discussed this briefly earlier at the committee of the whole. Many of these tools are already in use in the schools, so what will be different for our students this upcoming year?
Yeah, definitely. Some of these things have gradually been getting implemented. I don't know, I would say not all of these have been implemented with fidelity. So like the wit and wisdom, that is brand new this year. And as I've been on-ramped here into the district, what I would say is that I see lots of the pieces in place, but I don't necessarily see them all working cohesively together. So we may be looking at the data, but are we looking at that from a global standpoint? Really making sure we're providing then the second level of instruction that they need if it's working and now they're moving ahead, or if it's not working and we need to change our approach or do it in more small group or try a different technique. So that's really the work that we're going to start digging into now that we have brought in wit and wisdom, now that all of the teachers are doing Ufly curriculum that hasn't been done across every single classroom.
Well, and I think there were a lot of questions during our committee of the whole. You gave us a great education into this process and also, I think, gave us a great window on the places that we are going to continue to grow as clearly our students' achievement is a focus that the board and the district as a whole is really kind of keyed in on. One of the other things that, you know, I neglected to ask during the committee of the whole, but I think it would be really good for our community is peer coaches and instructional coaches are new to our district and something we're excited about implementing. Could you just briefly for our community provide like what those roles are doing and how that's going to improve the quality of education for our students?
Yeah, definitely. I would start with the peer coaches. Peer coaches are aligned with a pretty formal plan around how to support teachers improve their practice. And so one of the really neat things is that the peer coaches are able to connect and observe teacher practice, be a coach to talk to them about what's working, what's not working, and kind of different strategies that they want to implement. Now, as you saw my presentation, there's three of them and they cover the entire district. So they kind of are able to be that outside view, be able to kind of talk through the lens of one lesson and provide some, you know, support and then maybe circle back around later on in the year. Instructional coaches have a little bit more flexibility and that's what I'm really excited about this year with this position. They are site-based, so they obviously are going to be able to know staff on a little closer level. They are also really supporting from a district level, the implementation of this new curriculum and the needs that are coming up as we are implementing it. And so they are much more, I would say, accessible and be able to be responsive of the needs of an entire site. They also provide coaching, similar to what the peer coaches do. They've all been trained in cognitive coaching and so that is one of the asks. But they also really support, when we talk about being cohesive, how do we make sure we're getting through the whole curriculum in a year? That takes year-long support and that's hard to do if you don't have someone at the site supporting that along the way and in those planning meetings and in those conversations. And so that really is their focus this year, to support the implementation of the curriculum, making sure it's being done well and, and teachers are feeling supported. And those instructional coaches can co-teach, they can model teach, they can just coach and support or get resources. They really have some flexibility.
Excellent. I'm super excited about that.
Yeah. I, I don't know if this is possible, but I would love, later in the year, I know everybody's just, you know, hitting the ground here. But later in the year, could we have a Quality in Action with the peer coaches and the instructional coaches so that they could give us a little more maybe detail of, you know, or some examples of work that they're doing? I, I would love to hear more about that.
Maybe, maybe even include teachers they've worked with so we can hear about what that relationship is like.
Sounds fab. Yeah, I think that would be great. So thank you.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you so much.
And if I understood that other presentation, we don't know about the funding yet, right? It's kind of up in the air whether this is funded by the state or...
The state has only provided guidance with funding on a couple different areas. One around the curriculum purchase, that they said that they will provide some form of reimbursement. They have not given any other details besides that. And then the only other kind of specific funding is this grant application to provide for some of the coverage that, of the cost to provide this professional development and training to teachers.
Like the letters training and stuff like that, right?
Yep.
Yeah, the language in the statute is interesting because they passed the bills and then it says, "as determined by the Commissioner of Education." So the legislature passed it and now says, okay, Department of Education, bring clarity to what these all mean. So we'll be working closely with our partners there and making sure we're, you know, up to speed on everything, but really excited about the conditions we've put into place to do this work with the coaches and the support we've had from the community to be able to do that. Because this would be a real heavy lift if we didn't have the support for our educators because they already have such a heavy lift as it is. So excited that we're able to wrap around and really support them.
Well, and I also really want to commend the teachers who have jumped ahead of this and just dove in. I think when big curriculum changes happen, that can be really hard to implement. And if we've got teachers who are jumping into this work right away, I just, I'm really thankful that they're here to serve us.
Yeah, even, I've been at the sites this week and many of them are like, I'm ready to sign up for that training. Where do I need to sign up? So I think we like have some really exciting work and I've heard nothing but just support from that. I think a lot of people at the sites are excited where we're going.
That's fantastic.
That's, that's exciting to hear.
Awesome. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Up next, highlighting public listening session. Public listening sessions occur at 4:15 at the first meeting of the month here at City Hall. Also, public listening submissions can be made through our district website and we did not have any at this time. Next, I will turn this over to Vice Chair Monica Weber for our committee of the whole report, though Amy might have sort of explained what we spent a lot of our time doing.
She kind of stole my, my thunder a little bit on, on that. So we spent a good portion of our committee of the whole digging even a little deeper into the presentation that we just heard from Amy Winter and asked a few more kind of in-depth questions about literacy and about student support and about tiers of support and just making sure that no child in our district goes unseen. And making sure that we can provide different, learning about what tools are going to be implemented to provide the support for every learner in our, in our district. So that took the majority of the time. And then we also, we're having a meeting this week with our partners on the city council in South St. Paul to talk about community core values. And so it's an exciting project that we're going to be working with the city on as a special school district and as a one-city, one-school board model of what kind of core values can we both project for the city of South St. Paul, both from the school district and from the city perspective? So we're going to be, have a meeting with them later this week, so we talked about that. That's about it.
Thank you. And next, I will turn it over to Superintendent Dr. Zambrino to provide some highlights around the district as we're kicking off a new year.
Yeah, I mean, so much excitement and positive energy going on around the district and a lot of work, you know? So it's, it turns out, it's a lot of work to, you know, turn it all off and turn it all back on. But I will just say, our, our team has done a fantastic job of, of leaning in. And, you know, one of the things we do as a learning organization is we pause and reflect and make some improvements and changes as we go. And so coming into the year, one of the areas we really wanted to focus on was work around safety and security. So, you know, last year when we started the year, we worked on developing what we call our Desire call our desired daily experience. And so, we engaged with our, our staff, our families, our students, to hear, you know, what is it that they want out of this experience that they have while they're with us here in South St. Paul. And a lot of things came up out of that, and we'll continue to highlight those in our communications and other, other places. But, a resounding theme across, safety, 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 which makes total sense. You know, Superintendent, I can't imagine anything that's more important to me than making sure our staff, students, and families feel safe in our schools. And this is a world that's making that harder, when we see things on the news, every time we turn it on, you have to ask. And, you know, one thing we don't, don't often talk about enough, though, and I'm just gonna pause here and say, you know, having been working in schools and in leadership for a long time, the number one thing that makes our schools safe is relationships. And that's why I feel so good to be in South St. Paul. I look at our student board reps here, and, and what we're doing. It really is about relationships. So, that's how we find out things that might be going on, because there's trust. And people say, "Hey, this doesn't sound right," or "doesn't feel right." So, I just want to put that into the space. But as we were looking at our safety and security work, we had done some things in the past, but obviously, the pandemic happened, and it was time to kind of regroup and look at what we were doing. And so, we decided, we looked around at different options, and there's a nonprofit foundation called I Love You Guys. It's kind of an interesting name. People may wonder, that is actually a text message that the, the parents who started this, is a husband and wife team that started the foundation. That was the last text they received from their daughter from the school, when she was involved in a tragic incident. But there, it's a great organization. They provide all their materials for free. And so, we did some initial training for our staff, and our students are getting the training around the, what is called the standard response protocol. So, you can see there, it has five emergency actions. So, hold, secure, lockdown, evacuate, and shelter. And then, this, what you see here is the, the one-pager that's in all of our classrooms, so that if someone's in a room and they hear that, and they're not sure, it very clearly says, as a student, what you're supposed to do, and as an adult, what you're supposed to do. So, we'll continue to train. What we talk about is the more training we do, we develop muscle memory, so it becomes automatic. But, when we're in a moment of panic, sometimes we're not sure. That's why we want to make sure we have it readily available and in front of everybody. So, a couple of things just to note, and again, this should have been sent out, we sent it out in electronic communication last week, so families should have already seen this. Students have been working through it, staff. But I'll just kind of walk through those. So, hold is probably one of the more common ones that you would call from the office. And you would say, "Hold in your room or area, clear the halls." And I think when people hear that, it sounds alarming, like, "Wait, why do we have to be in this hold?" And I want to make sure that we really understand, a hold is a pretty, is a very common tool that's used. And if you look at what it says for students, "Clear the hallways, get in your classroom, business as usual." So, teaching continues. But I, I know in this heightened state that we're in, a student may pick up their phone and say, "We're in a hold," and all of a sudden, everyone thinks we're in a lockdown. Those are very, very different things. So, hold, for example, I think about when I was a principal, and we had a medical emergency, and we didn't want kids in the hall, out of respect for whoever's having that emergency. We want to make sure that our first responders are able to quickly get to the person in need. And so, we would call hold, and ask everyone to stay in their classroom, "But go ahead and continue teaching, let's keep the learning moving, and let's respect that privacy for one, and like, make sure we can have a quick response." So, I just want to make sure we highlight that, because that would be the most common thing, but I want to make sure we don't conflate that with lockdown. A secure, they used to call that a lockout. We're getting rid of the lock. The only way we're using the word lock is if it's a lockdown. So, sometimes, we used to have different language, but secure means get inside, lock outside doors. Again, if you look at that, that might sound alarming, but it is still business as usual. So, if there are, other than if we have like PE classes outside, we're gonna bring them in. Example, sometimes, there'd be something happening in the community, or, you know, I had one where there was a, the police were pursuing someone who had fled the scene of a crime. They didn't know that they were gonna come to us, but they warned us, and we'd just say, "Let's go into a secure. We're, we're monitoring at the front doors, but we're gonna continue with business as usual." So, both of those might instill alarm, but they're really precautionary tools. Lockdown is the one that's obviously the most serious, and that would be, they'll hear, the kids would hear, the adults would hear, lockdown, locks, lights, out of sight. So, really very similar to what we've always done. We are required by statute to do five lockdown drills, and so, we're beginning those this week, and we'll continue throughout the year. So, there's five times we do that during the year. We are not interested in causing trauma to our students, or panic for, for our staff. So, everyone will know when these are gonna happen. They'll be scheduled. We'll say, you know, "Tomorrow, you're gonna have the lockdown. Here's what you're gonna do," or that, that announcement. So, we're not trying to practice and trick people to see if they do it right, but we do want everybody to practice that protocol. Evacuate is most commonly used for fire drills, of which we have to do five per year. And so, we do, most commonly hear that, but I have had situations where we had a gas leak, and you had to get people out of the building. So, evacuate is followed with instructions, so people know what to do, because it's, it's, could be a unique thing. If we have a fire alarm go off, it's an automated message that tells people to evacuate, because there's potential fire. And then, the last one is shelter. If there's a hazard or something going on, we need to take cover. So, that aligns with the, once a year, we do a severe weather drill. And so, that comes in the spring, where we have everybody practice taking shelter. So, those are the five actions in the standard response protocol. So, nothing extremely new, but we're just practicing those with a little more intentionality, and, and building some new systems and supports around that. So, if anyone has any questions, I would say, definitely reach out to your building principal. They are well-versed in that now, and can certainly answer any questions. Health and wellness, this is that time of year, we hear about the flu coming up, and flu shot clinics, and of course, we have heard a little bit around some upticks around COVID, not alarmingly out of what we were expecting. We know this is gonna be something we're living with. But just a reminder, just as much as we value and prioritize everyone's safety, we know you have to have your health and be well. So, as always, we want staff coming to work if they're well, and students coming to school if they're well, but if not, to please stay home and make sure to get properly tested. If you were to test positive for COVID, we just ask to reach out to your school's nurse, and they can give extra direction around what that looks like. We always do follow the Minnesota Department Health and CDC recommendations around, Center for Disease Control recommendations around how we respond. So, it's just something we're living with. In Minnesota, we know we cycle through the seasons. So, beautiful fall, I think, in store, but we know that that gets followed by some colds and flus. Just one more reminder here around our educat, applications for educational benefits. So, we used to need our stu, our families to fill those out if they wanted to qualify your children for free or reduced-priced lunch. That is no longer required. It's exciting that the kids can get a free breakfast and a free lunch. But there is still funding tied to those applications. Where, schools will continue to ask families to fill out that application. Again, for us, as a district, it brings in a lot of additional funding that we use for our students in the classrooms. And then, families do have some incentives, so there are opportunities out there, like internet at a very reduced rate, some support for energy and home utilities, and other memberships, and things like that. So, still important, and want to make sure people are filling out those applications. We shared a little bit, but we now know who's running for our school board this November 7th. Got to review the ballot for the city of St. Paul. It's an interesting ballot, when it's a one big page, and all it has is one little section on our wonderful district. So, as a reminder, our director, Bernie Bierman, passed away unfortunately. We're creating a vacancy, and so, Kim Hume was nominated by the board, and is sitting here with us tonight in that vacancy. But we do need to, by statute, run a new election on November 7th. Because it's just the one thing on the ballot, we wanted to streamline and work closely with our city. The, the city has been fantastic to work with, and helping us kind of bring together an election in a, in a season that otherwise doesn't have any going on. But to streamline all votes will happen at the Dakota County Historical Society, which is just across the street from the City Hall where we are today. And our candidates are Kim Hume, Beth Johnson, Dan Vick, and John Wilcox. And if you want to learn more about them, there is information on our website. All right, so highlights. I mean, the biggest highlight, our kids being back in the schools. I mean, it's been fun having the staff back for a couple weeks, but it is so wonderful to have the children back. And I think for a lot of us who've been doing this for many years, it feels as much like it used to today as it has in a long time. It just feels like we're doing what we signed up to do, which is build relationships and, and teach kids great things. And so, super fun. I got to visit our kindergarten, had that later start, so they started towards the end of the week, last week on Thursday. I loved the picture there. I was so impressed by what I saw. I mean, I've been impressed in all of our classrooms, but the kindergartners, how ready they are for school. So, it just speaks volumes to our, our pre-kindergarten programming, as well as the daycares in the community, really focused on making sure our kids are ready to go for school. They looked like they'd been in school for weeks and weeks, and it was the first day. Because if, if anyone's ever been around kindergarten, I mean, people who teach kindergarten should be sainted, because it's, it's not easy work. But really fun to have everybody back. And then, as summer comes to an end, we know the state fair is a, a big deal, and it was neat to see some of the great things going on in our district showcase there. So, we had a strong showing for the arts. We know that this is a community that values the arts, so I want to commend our, our art teachers for making sure to get our, our community and our students represented. So, we had around 25 students submit artwork to the K-12 Visual Arts Competition, and 13 pieces brought home ribbons, including this grand prize here that Sam got, an eighth grader. And so, really neat to see what the kids could do. I'm a terrible artist, so that's why you have to have other people around you who are good at things you're not. So, love that our halls are decorated by the great work our kids are doing. But more than 2,000 total entries, and you see how we shined in that. So, congratulations to our teachers and our students for that. And then, we also had a teacher featured there, so Mr. Sin Walker, who's fifth-grade teacher at Capoja. If you remember, we had the governor come and visit in the spring to talk about the Solar for Schools program. And so, they heard about what was going on, and so, there was some outreach to say, "Hey, could we have a teacher come and talk about some of the things that they were doing?" And, and that was, the work they did was solar ovens. And so, kids learning how to harness solar energy, not just to power electricity, but to actually cook food. So, gotta love when, when our amazing students and staff are represented at the state fair. Some important dates coming up. We've got Homecoming in just two weeks. Should be a great game against Simley there, so I'm excited to see that. Our boys got a, got a win, so we broke the streak there. So, proud of our football team for that. But no matter what the outcome of the game, it's, it's an opportunity to celebrate the great district we, we have, and that we get to work in, or go to school in. And then, on the 25th, our early childhood family education classes begin, or sometimes we just say ECFE. I hear so often, adults who have children far past ECFE saying, "Oh, you know what? I learned this. They gave me this tip for my kid when they were little, and it still applies today." So, it's, it's not just getting them ready for school, but really for life. So, it's a great opportunity there. And then, October 9th, we have no school, so we can do some work with our, with our staff. And then, MEA break coming around the corner. October 19th, 20th, that's the Fall Conference of our Teachers Association. As always, our meeting materials are available on our website, and you can follow us on your favorite social media. Thank you.
Excellent. I love all of that back-to-school energy, and it's such an exciting part of year. If I can highlight one item back within your presentation, I know safety and security has been a focus of the board as a whole, ensuring that we're doing that well. And as a fellow teacher, I know what a valuable resource that is, and how alarming sometimes, when we change our schedule a little bit, it can be to a student. And so, I also just really want to sort of mention how some of those hold and secures are not a crisis point in a school in any way, but really just a way for us to continue to take care of school in a respectful and productive way. When we hold, holds in school, school's just continuing. We're just continuing to do the work that we do in the classroom.
Absolutely. So, thank you.
Excellent. All right. With that, we move on to our consent agenda. Consent agenda items are typically financial claims, staffing, and personnel in nature, have been presented in our board packets, and possibly discussed at the committee of the whole, and do not require sort of any further motion from that. But can I have a motion to approve our consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And with that, our consent agenda passes. We do not have any policies under review at this time for the meeting. We have one business item tonight, which I am looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board, to approve scheduling a joint work session with the city of South St. Paul on Thursday, September 14th, 2023. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And just for discussion, this is our core values discussion that we are gonna continue to have. Vice Chair Monica Weber talked about, as we bring these two entities together, to see how we can continue fostering a great partnership between both the city and the school. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And with that, the motion carries. And next, I turn to our board members for reports, as to board members for events they have participated in, or where they have seen a passion within our district. And I will start all the way down with Kim Hume.
All right. Well, we have had just like a week of school, and already, I saw passion at Capoja. Brendan Johnson has already gathered up kids to help fill out her leadership team for Fight Cancer Like a Ninja Warrior. My daughter has decided to join that, so I got to see all these kids come out of the gym, so excited about how they're going to spend money to continue adding to their ninja warrior courses, and how excited they are to be able to like, support people in our community who are dealing with cancer, and maintaining the memory of their friend Jamir. So, it was just really exciting to see that. We hadn't even had like, three days of school yet, and they were already getting to work on that. So, I loved that.
Excellent. Wendy Felton?
Yes. Yes, I want to, want to let a lot of people know about upcoming events that will be happening in our district. First thing, that includes all of our schools, Capoja, Lincoln, the High School CLC. Our Educational Foundation Walkathon is coming up on Wednesday, September 20th. It will be held at the Lincoln Center track, starting at 4:30. And it is a fundraiser for Education Foundation. It's a lot of fun. Kids can come in, walk the track, and it is a fundraiser. And then, some events for Capoja Education Center, coming up on Tuesday, September 19th, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. They, they will be fortunate to have a fundraiser from the Coop Restaurant here in South St. Paul, right down on Third Avenue and Southview. They will be having a dine-out night. And if you place an order to the Coop, and you mention Capoja to them, that they will give a 10% credit to the Capoja Education Center PTA. So, coming up next week on Tuesday night for that. And another thing that Capoja Education Center will be doing, they have movie nights at the school. They, they have a once-a-month movie being held there. The September event, which will be on the September 28th at 6:00, they are holding the movie Inside Out. And you can always look on their website to get all the information of the dates and the movie that will be shown. And then, some things for Lincoln Center. They are posting that they are looking for volunteers, if any parents, community members would be interested in volunteering at Lincoln Center. The first thing that they're looking volunteers for is their first assembly, which is October 12th and 13th, from the STEAM Museum, which is a science event. And you have to apply to be a volunteer. For more information, contact Lincoln Center. And also, a fundraiser for Lincoln Center is gonna be held tomorrow night at Culver's Restaurant in West St. Paul, tomorrow night, Tuesday, from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. Place an order there at Culver's, let them know that you are with Lincoln Center, and they will get credit to the school. And a few things for the high school secondary building. As I mentioned before, if you're interested in Packers spirit wear clothing, t-shirts, things like that, if you want to be real supportive of South St. Paul Packers, you can place orders for, for those items. You can look on their website. And they also ask for a password. The password is Packers. So, you, you would want to indicate that also on your, on your application. And as was mentioned earlier, Homecoming Week is coming up at the end of, the end of this month, September 25th through the 30th. As, on the 29th, that Friday night, we, we will be playing Simley High School at, at the high school in Etta Gear Field. And also, there is a football game at the high school this Thursday night at 7:00. We're playing Minneapolis North, so looking forward to attending that also. And one thing that really excites me, the musical theater for the fall production, which they have already had a lot of people come in to, to apply for the positions, it's the, gonna be having the Wizard of Oz will be their musical theater presentation this year. It's- It's November 10th through the 12th, so it will be a lot of fun. I love musicals at the theater. And just a couple personal things for me. Since I am a graduate of South St. Paul High School back in the class of '75, we are starting to have meetings coming up this week, because we are gonna get together and start planning our class reunion, which will be in two years, which will be our 50th class reunion. So if there's any classmates out there that know me from graduation, please feel free to contact me if you'd like more information or if you have any ideas as to where we're gonna have this major, major event coming up in two years. And the other thing that was mentioned earlier with the senior center representatives, it was mentioned that the fashion show will be coming up on Wednesday, October 4th, as I also serve on that board of directors at the senior center. I encourage you, if you'd like to come to apply, just, you can register with Linda Buess at Central Square. There is, it's a $20 charge to come, because that helps pay for our catered lunch from the Coop. And it's very good. We had them cater our lunch the last time, too. So we know that it's an excellent chicken dinner, and I also am a model there. So if you'd like to come to the fashion show, any community members age 55 and older can join the senior center here in South St. Paul. So, thank you.
Tim Felton?
I don't dare say I don't have anything to add after that. I always seem so uninformed following Wendy. No, I just want to mention the game again Thursday that Wendy mentioned. It'll be at Ettinger Field. And I also want to mention that Carrie Petrowzuski volunteered the award recipient this year. Volunteer of the Year Award is Angela Becker, and she'll be celebrated this Thursday before the game at 4:30 at the Boulevard Tavern. Very deserving recipient.
Excellent. Monica Weber?
I don't have anything this week.
Nikki Oliver?
I have nothing this week.
Anne Cliflin?
Very little, but we did not have a local issues meeting this week. We will be meeting as the Finance and Long-Term Facilities Planning Committee later this week on Wednesday. And I also really want to thank Mr. Sinwalker for representing Capoja, South St. Paul Public Schools at the state fair, leading the way to show other school districts what we can do with solar on schools and showing kids what you can do with a solar oven. We had to go home and build a solar oven. It worked. It's great. It was incredibly messy and wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Sinwalker.
And I'd like to conclude just by wishing everyone to have an incredible year this year. Love that back-to-school energy that we always have. With no further items on our agenda, I am looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting of September 11th, 2023.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? With that, the motion carries. Meeting is adjourned at 6:53.